Welcome to the 2022 Candidate Forum for Crosslake Mayor and City Council. I'm Cindy Mugato, the Director of the Brainard Lakes -- of the Crosslake Chamber, and I thank you tonight for coming and watching our forum. And for those of you on Facebook who have turned in live, thank you for joining us as well. Tonight's forum is brought to you by the League of Women Voters, the Crosslake and Brainard Lakes Chambers of Commerce, and the Brainard Dispatch with support from the Brainard Lakes Area Community Foundation and BLEDAC. I want to thank Haley Gibbs, our host tonight at the Gathering Center, for hosting this evening's forum. She will be on hand after the forum to answer any questions you may have about the gathering and the services that they offer. Restrooms are located right up here to my left. Water bottles are available complimentary in the back, and candidate information can be found in the entryway vestibule. Thank you to the candidates for throwing your hats in the ring to serve the people, the residents, and the community of Crosslake. As I mentioned, the forum is being livestreamed on the Crosslake Chamber Facebook page and will be available for viewing from now until Election Day on the Crosslake Chamber and Brainard Lakes Chambers websites. I want to introduce Wayne Holtmeyer, League of Women Voters, serving as your moderator this evening. And Pat Nedco of Lake Country Crafts &amp; Coens will keep everyone on task as our timer. Matt Killian in the back is the President of the Brainard Lakes Chamber. He and myself will be gathering audience questions and answering or taking the Facebook questions. So with that, I am going to turn the microphone over to Wayne. At any time, if you have a question on one of these question cards, just raise your hand and I'll come and get it.
Good evening. Before we begin, I would like to cover a few points. Please remain as quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking so that everyone can hear. Also, please hold your applause until the forum has ended. We ask that you politely turn off or silence your cellphone. No photography or recording will be allowed during the forum. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the forum organizers. None of the organizers endorse candidates or political parties. Please refer to your programs for information on the Crosslake City Council and Mayor's races. All candidates were invited to participate in this forum, and all are present except for City Council candidate Jamie Knapp, who submitted a written opening statement. You are welcome to submit written questions for candidates either on question cards provided or posting a comment on Facebook. If you need a question card, please raise your hand at any time. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. We reserve the right to screen the questions and may rephrase or consolidate questions to cover as many topics as possible. If you do not get a chance to ask your question or an answer is unclear, feel free to speak with the candidates after the forum. Each candidate will have 1.5 minutes for opening statements. Then I will ask a series of prepared questions with up to one-minute responses. Candidates will also have 30 seconds to make closing statements. To ensure fairness, we will rotate the order of answering questions. If time runs out, I will call time, but candidates will be -- are allowed to quickly finish their comment. The entire forum will be 90 minutes in length, ending at 8:00 PM. We will move right into the opening statements, beginning with the written statement provided by Mr. Knapp. Thank you -- whoops, wrong one. I was going to end it before we started. This is a statement from Jamie Knapp, Crosslake City Council candidate. "I want to thank those that put on this forum together, and I do regret missing this opportunity to share my views directly. Due to a scheduling conflict, I am out of town this evening as I have a prior commitment with the Crosslake Fire Department tonight. I grew up in the Crosslake area, graduated from Pequot Lakes High School, and along with my wife Angie Knapp-Hogg, lived in the Cold Spring area where I served on the City Council for five years. We are now permanent residents of Crosslake. We work with -- from our home and cherish our city of Crosslake. We hold dear our small-town values, and I am dedicated to the people and the business of our community. Crosslake needs strong, experienced leadership that will deliver with integrity and transparency. I understand how to contribute and to work through issues and challenges our city will face now and the coming years. Thank you, Jamie Knapp." Well, we begin with the opening statements, and again, they will be up to a minute and a half, and we will start with Andre.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Donald Andre Channard. I am a permanent resident of Crosslake. Been here about 10 years. Love our community, love the people in our community, love our businesses. I look forward to serving the people and businesses of our community. I am pro-business, and I want progress for our businesses and for them to progress and be able to thrive in an environment where they're much needed. They're the majority of our taxpayers for Crosslake, so we really love them and we want to favor to them in some respects, not bend over backwards for them, but favor to our businesses and help them out as much as we can and all of our taxpayers. So I would look forward to, if I'm elected mayor, having open forums with our businesses, local taxpayers, and find out what's needed. What are your problems? What are the issues? And find solutions for everybody to make Crosslake a better place and continue to make it a better place. Keep it a small town, but have progress in it. Thank you.
Carla?
Hi there. I'm Carla Bainbridge. I am a 58-year-old female entrepreneur. Proud of me for divulging my age, by the way. Been coming up here for three generations. My grandparents started coming up in the 20s, then my parents, and then, well, of course, my whole life I've been up here, as well as I purchased my place when I was in my 20s, and my husband purchased our place in the 80s. So we have a long history of being here. I am a business owner, have been a business owner for 21 years. Prior to that, I worked for Corporate America, decided I didn't want to do that anymore. So I own a technology business called Predictive Talent, which helps in the hiring process for franchise chains. I am a mom of two kids, 36-year-old boy, a 29-year-old girl. I have a passion for life. You will see me biking around here, boating, golfing, of course, and all the other stuff that you can do up here. During the time that I was actively involved in my business, I've been less active in the last couple of years, I also was part of an organization called Entrepreneurs Organization. So I was a member, then I ran the chapter, Minnesota chapter, as president there, then I went on to a regional position, then a global position. So I have quite a lot of experience running large organizations. Today, I'm fortunate enough to be able to have time to give back, and the first place I'm doing that is here in Crosslake, in our community.
Dave?
I'm Dave Nevin. I am currently the mayor. I've lived here for 32 years. I raised a family here. I am -- have been working and currently am working. I have been on the Planning and Zoning Commission in town. I don't know what, eight or 10 years ago I got on that. I got on the Public Works. I was on the council for two years, and I've been a mayor for four years. I like to form committees. I like public input. I like to know what the people are thinking. So I like to form committees, Public Safety Committee, VRBO Committee we've done, it's real successful, a building committee when we decided to do the remodeling in the new City Hall. So Town Hall meetings, committees, Town Hall meetings have been very successful. They keep the community updated as to what's coming up and get their input. Town has got some upcoming projects that are going to be pretty impactful, just as this summer has been for all of us. We've got an intersection improvement coming on 3 and 66, not sure what that's going to be. Loon Center, VRBO management, sidewalk expansion, and I think we really need to have some kind of entry-level housing in town, so we've got to support our young people to get them in, to support the businesses. So if we're re-elected, I'll represent you, and thanks for the opportunity.
Steve?
Hi. I'm Steven -- whoa, my God, that's loud. Sorry. I'm Steven Hanning. I'm running for City Council. I was born in the Twin Cities, grew up in San Diego, California. Please don't hold that against me, or if you like that, you know, keep liking it. I moved back here about six years ago. I've been coming here my whole life. My grandparents had our cabin on Rush Lake since 1960. My parents moved back here 30 years ago to help my grandparents through the twilight of their lives, and I came up here full-time about seven years ago to help my parents with theirs. Since I've been here, I've worked in some local businesses. We run -- right now, I'm running Country Works, which is the coffee shop up the road, which some of you have probably seen has been more or less shut down. We're doing some commercial stuff here and weighing our options for the future. We have an online sales business there, and I also manage 14 Lakes Brewery, which is why I know it's unprofessional, but I'm wearing the hat because I came straight from work. I love this community, and it has blown up in the last decade or so. And that's a good thing. You know, progress can be a good thing. It's often conflated with things like prosperity, and it can be that as well. But I think we have to find a way to invite prosperity and preserve this community that we all love here as well, and that's why I want to be part of the council.
Jackson?
Hi. I see many friendly, familiar faces in here. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Jackson Purfirst. My family owns Crosslake Fitness and Town. I graduated from Pequot. I went to CLC in Brainard and got my Generals. Now I'm currently working at Lakes Area Rental. I'm going to start an electrician apprenticeship this fall, as well as finish up my private pilot's license. But most importantly, I live and I work in Crosslake, and Crosslake is going to be my future home. So I feel like I have a vested interest in the community in charting my future and our future. If I want to stay here, I want to have -- I want to be vested in my community. Like Dave was saying earlier, we don't have any housing. I'm still in my room, and that's not because I'm grounded. There's just nowhere to go. So that would be a hot topic that I believe is going to be coming up in front of the council. But we also need to keep the small-town charm of Crosslake. Even though we are growing, we need to keep down to our small-town roots while we advance in our progress. But I hope I have your vote, and if you want to talk about anything after, I would be more than willing.
Sandy?
I'm Sandy Barter. I'm excited to be running for a seat on City Council. I've never before been involved in a political race, so it's brand-new territory for me. I think, in a way, that's a good thing because I come to you with fresh, untainted eyes and complete objectivity. I have no commitments to anyone other than the residents and the businesses of Crosslake. My husband and I moved here about two years ago, though we've been coming up here for many, many summers. We absolutely love Crosslake, and I'm eager to devote my time and energy to moving Crosslake forward while still definitely maintaining its unique charm that makes it so special to us and to everybody else. Professionally, I've worked in the field of education. Most of that time was spent as the Director of an Adult Basic Education Program, where I taught just about every subject you could imagine to students from ages 16 to 90. I helped many legal immigrants learn or perfect their English so they could better assimilate into our society. I helped many students earn their GED or earn their high school diploma. Basically, I've worked with people from all walks of life, from all around the world, and I've served as their friend, their teacher, their advocate, and their mentor. In that capacity, I've worked with many local community organizations, local businesses, city councils, school boards, and in that capacity, I really had to hone my skills of negotiation, collaboration, innovative thinking, and compromise. And I hope to use those experiences and those skills to help benefit the city of Crosslake. Thank you.
Okay. We'll now transition to the prepared questions, and you will each have up to one minute to respond, and we're going to start with Carla. What is one local challenge or opportunity that you would like to immediately address? And if elected, what would you -- what would be your first step in doing so?
Well, there's a lot of opportunities. I would say the thing that is most prevalent, current, is, as everybody knows, is the road situation. So I would say addressing the Public Works issues because there are other projects potentially coming up in the future. So I would like to get a handle on how that will work.
Okay. Dave?
It's hard for me to say one, but I think if I had to pick one, I would like to work with the county and figure out something for VRBOs. Vacation rentals is a real hot topic, and we all need and want them. But I don't get any more calls than I do about vacation rental properties and being disruptive. So I think that would probably be one of the hottest things that I'd go after, is try to get some kind of teeth in an ordinance that'd protect the neighborhood.
Steven?
Yeah, I would kind of agree with that. As far as one of the big problems up here is the congestion that we're seeing. I feel like in the last five or six years that I've been up here, the traffic is crazy. The, you know, we're a bustling summer town. That's going to happen. The VRBOs are, you know, that's your -- that's your -- if you own a place, it's yours to do with, as you choose, if you own property. However, when you -- when you live in a neighborhood, you -- there's a kind of an unwritten contract in that neighborhood that you get to just be gone all the time and, you know, renting out to, you know, you got a -- I got a 90-year-old neighbor on the other side of here. I got college kids all summer long shooting off fireworks at 3:00 in the morning. And I was young and had fun up here when I was that age, but there has to be -- there have to be some rules. There has to be a way to keep some of that in check because, as you get that transient community, you lose your community. People that aren't invested here are -- create problems for the people that are.
Jackson?
There are many opportunities or issues dealing -- coming forth to the next council, but one that I had mentioned before, I think we need some kind of housing, some market-rate housing for people my age to stay and live and work in Crosslake. Our businesses need more employees. That wouldn't be affordable housing or Section 8 housing. That would be market-rate. A lot of people use the term affordable, and then it turns into government-funded. But market-rate housing, to where it could even maybe be towards a under-50 community to entice people to stay and work and live in Crosslake to further benefit the community.
Sandy?
I agree with Jackson in regards to the housing situation. We have friends who just bought a lot on our block, and they wanted to live up here until they could finish building, and they can't find anything. They can't find any place affordable to live. And I just think there's got to be a way that we can create some incentives with builders or to collaborate in order to create a situation where we can encourage people like Jackson to stay here throughout the year and not just accommodate our visitors in the summer who we love, and they're welcome, and they really help our revenue, but to help encourage full-time residents to live here.
Andre?
Local challenge, construction projects, and working with our businesses to make the outcome beneficial to both parties. As we look at things that may or may not have happened at the time we speak, there are many businesses that support us financially with their tax base, and they're being hurt very, very badly, especially this summer. So maybe the timing and working with our businesses a little bit better on future projects.
Okay. Dave, we're going to start the second question with you. How do you envision working with the city staff to ensure priorities and policy decisions are met?
That is a difficult one for me, Wayne. Historically, I guess I got to be honest with everybody, historically, I've had a really hard time working with city staff. Hopefully, this next council will come and we'll get somebody in there that we can negotiate or maneuver things better, but I guess I don't have a lot of answers for that. City staff has been my biggest obstacle since I've been in here. Thank you.
Okay. Steven?
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that question either. Until you get in that room, you don't know what it's going to be like. I've been in a million meetings. I've been on tons of committees. I worked in Corporate America for 20 years. It's going to be different with every group you're with, but it starts by giving respect and expecting respect in return. Everybody in that room earned their place in that room. And I won't -- I won't stand to be disrespected, and no one should stand to be disrespected from me, but until I get in there, I just -- I don't really even know what to expect.
Okay. Jackson?
I'm in agreement with these guys as well. I've been in City Hall many times, and personally, I haven't had an issue with any of the city staff, but I have heard of many issues with city staff and public. What my idea would be is, like Steven said, you know, you really don't know until you get in there. But once we get in there, first day, everybody's the council, planning, zoning, city staff, everybody. I'd like to have a little pow-wow, so to say, and try to get everybody on the same page and hash out some differences and difficulties and try to move past that. So, you know, I do feel like there is things that need to be addressed, but you really don't know until you get in there and work it for a little bit, so.
Sandy?
Well, I mean, I've had to work with some very diverse groups of people, and I just think you have to create some kind of a common goal. You have to find a common goal and then find a way to negotiate, collaborate, work together to meet that common goal. You obviously can't make everybody happy on every issue, but I think there is a way. I believe there is a way. I'm an optimist that you can find a way to get everyone to work together and collaborate in a positive way.
Andre?
Be a dictator. Tell them what to do. Kidding. That doesn't work. I own six businesses, and I've worked with a wide variety of people, and keep my employees and keep them very happy. I would plan to do that the same with everyone in the city. You're not going to make everyone happy, and you're always not going to be a yes-man, but there has to be a direct response to a lot of things, and we need to work together to come up to a solution. Sometimes it is very hard, but to keep everybody on the same page, I think, can come pretty naturally. It comes pretty naturally to me with speaking with people, speaking with large groups of people. So getting along and making things work together, I think, will be fairly easy. I know there are going to be differences of opinions, but that happens, and we'll work to the best solution.
Okay. Carla?
Yes, so this would be one of my greatest strengths, is bringing people together that may not have a common goal. I did this with my business, obviously, over the course of 20 years, but also in the Entrepreneurs Organization, I ran the local chapter of 100 entrepreneurs. Okay, they're crazy people. In order to get them to achieve common things was interesting, but we did. We established our goals together, and we may have had differing opinions, but we did. And as in terms of how that relates to city staff, it's the same thing. So it's a matter of bringing people together and finding our strategy, what our common objectives are, and working towards it, and making sure everybody's accountable for their part.
Okay. As we go to the third question, I'd like to remind the audience to submit written questions on the question cards or by posting a comment on Facebook. And if you need a question card, again, please raise your hand. Okay, the third question, and we'll start -- this is going to be for Steve. What, if anything, should the city of Crosslake do to increase the availability of affordable housing or multifamily housing?
Who? Stumper. Honestly, I have no idea how you do that. I mean, it certainly should be something we talk about. Certainly, obviously, up here, you know, several of my cohorts here are definitely interested in that, and I am too. We obviously need more people that can work, and, you know, a lot of our businesses are desperate for help. But I'm not exactly informed on what our options are there until I get in that room. I don't know -- I don't know what our land options are. I don't know what you can force to happen to make that an easier acquisition or project. So, you know, obviously, I'm ill-prepared for this question, and I'm not -- I'm not going to -- I'm not going to make something up. I would have to do some research on that, and fortunately, I hadn't. So that's it.
Okay. Jackson?
There is some -- there is some land available north of town that would maybe be worth looking at and developing, getting together with some contractors and having more public forums with contractors and the business people of Crosslake and residents and getting their thoughts and ideas. But there is some land that could be developed that maybe, you know, if the city buys it or somebody buys it and we figure out some kind of way around of creating, developing a neighborhood, there is options and there is ideas of being able to accomplish this task.
Sandy?
This has been a concern of mine, as I mentioned earlier, and I've been wondering if there can't be some kind of an incentive with local builders to create -- generate greater interest. I just think there's got to be a solution. My husband calls me the problem solver, and I think if I could put my mind to it, and we could all put our minds together, we could figure out a way to create some kind of a lovely development that would encourage, you know, people to stay here long-term and to bring more employers -- employees here into our community. But I won't give up on that one. Thank you.
Andre?
I've actually talked to a couple friends of mine that are developers and have talked about small projects or mid-size projects to help with that solution. It is -- it's a big problem. It's a big problem for everybody, whether you're local, whether you're going to the Wharf to have dinner. Get a waiter or waitress. It's tough. It's tough. It's tough to happen. We do need to make it happen. There are some ways to make those solutions happen. There are ways to spend our -- some taxpayer money, but there are ways to get some government funding to do so as well.
Carla?
So I don't have me the single answer, but there are a lot of other cities like ours that have gone through this. So I would recommend reaching out and understanding what's worked from experienced individuals and what has not worked, as well as we can take examples like what they do at Grandview. They bring in kids from Europe and they house them. Now, there is that issue. You still have to be able to house them, but I believe there are creative ways to do that, and they are fully staffed with over 300 volunteers over the summer, while they're not straight volunteers, they're paid, but...
Okay. Dave?
The city of Crosslake, 30 years ago when I came up here, by Schaefer Road, back in the industrial park there, offered lots for sale for $3,000 each. I was not involved with it. I don't know what it was. You can buy raw land for $5,000 to $10,000 an acre. You could subdivide that. I believe that the city could make an investment into it and have lots for sale for $30,000. If you get a private developer, and there's many of them in town right now, they have one-acre lots, they're for sale for $80,000 to $90,000. That out of the gate makes it unaffordable for a young family to come in and build a place. So I think the city's going to have to dig in and make an investment with the taxpayers' money, but the return should be very easy to tell them that there's going to be a good return, and it's a good investment, all around for the city.
Okay. As we move to the fourth question, again, as a reminder, if the audience has a question card filled out, just raise your hand and somebody will pick it up from you. Okay, we're going to -- Jackson, this fourth one is for you. How, if at all, should the city of Crosslake regulate or limit short-term vacation rentals, also known as VRBOs?
You know, I was talking with some other people about this. Crosslake does have a lot of VRBOs, but we have to picture the whole thing, too. You have all of Whitefish Chain, so Crosslake isn't going to be able to manage everything on the Whitefish Chain. Some of it's ideal, you know, you name it. Crosslake could be a model city with Crow Wing County on the topic of VRBOs and how we regulate them. We could be the pitcher on how to do it. If you look on Gaul Lake, half of Gaul is Cass County and half is Crow Wing County. We have more VRBOs in Crosslake than even Gaul Lake has or even the Nisswa area. So if we could come up with a strategy or a plan on how to regulate VRBOs, and to be honest with you, I really don't know what that is at the moment, but I know if we come together, once again, with business owners and people who own VRBOs and renters, we could come up with a sound solution and be the model for Crow Wing County.
Sandy?
I agree about, you know, getting VRB owners together to agree to a certain, you know, set of restrictions or regulations. My husband and I have stayed at many VRBOs, and I know they always function better. It's always better if you have the owner in the community or at least a manager in the community. So if there's a problem, you can contact someone immediately and have an instant resolution. But so I think that that's a start, is to have an instant contact on hand so that Dave isn't the one who's taking calls, the manager or the owner is taking calls, and they're, you know, they're solving the problem. they're, you know, they're solving the problem. So that would be my first step, is to make sure that you have instant contact on hand to handle the problems.
Thank you. Andre?
VRBOs, good and bad, yeah, they are good, they are bad. Depends on where you live and depends on who's coming in, what they're doing, how late they're partying, et cetera. There are ways to tax VRBOs and license them within the city. I don't believe that's being done so now. I have talked to the planning and zoning department on that, and it doesn't sound like it is. So by taxing and licensing them and putting regulations upon them that other cities have done, we can do the same thing, or we can do it better to our liking. We can structure that license in a different way to make everybody kind of abide, so it kind of fits with everybody in the nature of our community.
Carla?
So this is an interesting topic. I was talking with the owners of Crosswoods Golf Course yesterday, and he said, "How do you feel about VRBOs?" And I go, "Hmm, this is a trick question, probably." And he said, "Well, I like them because they bring in probably fifty percent of our money." And I went, "Oh, gosh, okay, well, that's important." So personally, we have, just in our bay, we're on Daggett, we have a couple places that have, owners have bought them for VRBO purposes. I was a little concerned, it hasn't been terrible, but we have had some problems. So the answer is, there has to be regulations that are backed up and firmly adhered to.
Dave?
VRBOs are great. There's, oftentimes, there's one thing they forget, and it's respect your neighbor. And I get a lot of calls on them. So I think, just like anything, if we're going to have some laws or some rules, we've got to put some teeth in it. I, I think VRBOs should get three strikes and you're out, it should be licensed. I think certainly we have to work with the county, and hopefully, we could get one together with the county. But I've gone as radical as far as to say, if they have three complaints against them, they're legitimate, they should get a two-thousand-dollar fine. The purpose for the heavy fines is going to deter them, they're going to start managing their properties. The other purpose of it is, we're not going to have to take our tax, tax dollars out to pay somebody to run that operation, to, to manage it. So let them self-fund it by their destructive behavior, you know? VRBOs are great, and the city, we want them, we like turnaround, we like people, but there are some of them that are bad.
Stephen?
Shut them down. No, not serious, but they are a prob, there is a problem here, and it's like I mentioned before, what happens when you do, when you have a lot of renters coming and going a lot is, you create this transient community, and a lot of other problems follow. You know, I walk, I walk down the road, I walk my dog, I bring a plastic bag with me because there's trash everywhere, because all my, all the houses around me VRBO. But you're going to have a fight on your hands. The conservative in me says that you absolutely have to let people do as they will with their property, but again, when you're in a community, there's an unspoken law there, you know, that you have to abide by your neighbors and they have to abide by you. Probably, at the very least, you're going to have to look into things like occupancy limits. I do like the idea of three strikes. I doubt two thousand dollars is going to put a dent in anybody's VRBO, but it's a start. But yeah, it's a, it's a problem that needs to be addressed in some creative ways up here, for sure.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to again remind the audience, if you have questions, fill out the question cards and raise your hand, and they'll be picked up, or post it on Facebook, and they will be received at, over, online. We'll move to the fifth question, and we're going to start with Sandy. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes, fees, and assessments?
Well, that's an easy one. No, I think that, can you repeat that, please?
Yes. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes, fees, and assessments?
Well, I think last year the taxes went down, and, and I think that the city has been well-managed. I think if we can maintain the same level of taxes and still maintain the quality of life that we've been enjoying, I think that's great, but I think basically, I mean, I've never been in debt, you know, I've worked, I've been poor, but I've never been in debt. I've always paid my, you know, I've had to work more jobs than one or two at a time. And I just think if there's, if we make sure that we're, that we're spending what we can afford and we're addressing the needs of, of our residents, I mean, it shouldn't be that hard to balance, frankly. I mean, obviously, no one wants taxes to go up, and everybody wants to be safe and have their services provided, and I don't think that should be that challenging. I think we should be able to do that, as long as we know where the money's going, why it's going there, who's making the decisions, and make sure the residents have complete transparency about what's being spent.
Thank you. Andre?
Our city services need to be improved a little bit. We need to put a little bit more money into our police. I know that we've had a hard time in keeping some of our personnel there because of what they're being paid and what they're being offered according to other cities that are right around us. So some of our people are leaving, some of our police officers have left, and that's a tough thing. We need those city services, we love those people, to help us out, have a, make our community safe. Our city taxes are unfortunately going up with the flavor of the world that was put in place by inflation. So that's going to happen. Our value of our money has gone down, so we're putting in more, we're going to have to give some more out to our city ser, our people that work for our city.
Thank you. Carla?
Yeah, so as best I understand it, through talking to Chip and Eric, the, they're taxed in terms of, they have three times the amount of incidences in the last two months they've ever had, and their backs are to the wall, they're doing the best they can, so they need more help, that is for sure. And all you have to do is look at the number of incidences and the number of people you have to understand you need more help. So if you need more help, you need to pay for more help, and it's just that simple.
Thank you. Dave?
Well, the people in town here, they deserve and they should get good services. We are always very conscious of the tax rate and what we do, but I think in the past, I think we've supported, especially this last year, we just got done with negotiations, and it became very clear to us that we got to pay people more money. And I think we did that two or three times this spring, trying to keep up with it. So we definitely got to take care of our people. We got to look at our roads. Typically, they put our roads on a twenty-year schedule. There's a lot of roads in town that have got thirty years on it. I see some Big Pine Trail people here, they got thirty-five years on it. So, you know, we should stretch that out, but, you know, we, this community deserves and expects good services, and we got to give it to them. I think we are.
Thank you. Steve?
Everybody wants more services, and nobody likes paying more taxes. That's going to cause a problem every single time. When you have an unlimited desire for services, you will never have enough in the eyes of some people, and that is unfortunate. Obviously, we spend taxpayer money because it's taxpayer money. We want to use that money to service you people and everybody else in this community that, that pays into it, and the people that come here and pay into it. So really, the only answer is pragmatism. I mean, you have to look at what we provide and, and give more where we can, and maybe that means less where we can. But again, the numbers will tell the tale. And unfortunately, I have just not in that room, and maybe I haven't done as much research as some of the other people up here have, or maybe we're all just guessing, but once you walk, walk in there and somebody breaks down the numbers for you, some of that stuff should become pretty apparent. So you give as much as you can without taking too much, and those things are just kind of, kind of have to define themselves, I'm afraid.
Thank you. Jackson?
You know, I think we all can agree, what you put in is what you want to get out of the system you're putting into. I think, you know, like I said, we all can agree that you want good services, but you're going to have to pay for good services. And if we're seeing there's less money in one pot, we're, if we need to move some over or cut some from something to fund the police department or to pay the, you know, to have more police officers or for them to stay, we may need to cut some things, or we also need to make, move some money. So I think, you know, I'm not going to beat around the bush, we all, we, we would all agree that we just need to fund services.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to question six, and we're going to start with Andre. What is the most significant difference between you and the other candidates?
Great question. I don't know, they're great people. They are. I think David's done a good job, talked to Carla a little bit, and read some information on her. What sets me apart, I'm very direct. I do get things done. Not everyone in a room is always happy at the end of that. Sometimes you have to tell people the honest truth, and sometimes that hurts. I'm very willing to do that, to own a business and run very successful businesses. It's something I've had to do on a regular basis. It's not always fun, but sometimes just telling the cold, hard truth, not satisfying every single person, happens, so I think just being very honest and very direct.
Thank you. Carla?
So I think one of my biggest strengths is my leadership experience, so thirty years of running organizations and businesses and so on. And how did that go? Well, not always great, but for the most part, very good. We've had a lot of success, and that was by bringing people together. So I have a long treker, track record of running businesses and organizations by bringing people together to make that happen, as well as, you know, I've been up in this area for three generations, as I said.
Thank you. Dave?
First of all, I got to say that I'm quite pleased with this group that you put together up here, from everything I hear, you know? I think, I think you guys got a good choice to make, anyway. The thing that I bring to the table, I guess, is I've just got some experience. I've got some years in sitting up here doing the battles.
Okay. Thank you. Steve?
Well, I wouldn't presume to know what I know more than any of the other people up here. I can only tell you, you know, what my experiences are, because I assume we all have the same goal, which is to make Crosslake a great place and even better every day. I worked in corporate America for twenty years, small fish in a big pond, Qualcomm Incorporated in San Diego, and I was fortunate there to work on many committees, on many projects. I have rolled out worldwide materials distributions, I have been involved in the ground floor building up of, of office buildings, I have worked hand-in-hand with janitors and VPs alike. I am not afraid of a committee, and I am not afraid to speak my mind, and I know how to compromise, and I know how to reach conclusions and solve problems.
Thank you. Jackson?
You know, I think it's the elephant in the room, but to no fault of anybody, but I am probably one of the more younger people that is running for city council. But I'm looking to invest my future here. I want to stay in Crosslake. I don't want to have to pick up and go to Brainerd or go El...